The City of Lenore for Tuesday, August the 17th, 2021. We welcome you here this evening. As we normally do, we will start in just a few minutes with a moment of silence. We'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance for the evening. I would like to, as we go to our moment of silence, please keep some families in your thoughts and prayers, please. Would like to keep the family of our own Chief Hare, the loss of his father this past week. And we want to keep the Hare family and everyone in our thoughts and prayers there. Thinking about you a lot, Chief. We appreciate all you do. And the loss of Captain Ray Robbins, a former fireman here with the Lenore Fire Department, also passed away this past week. Please keep Ray's family in your thoughts and prayers as well as they try to move through this. And also, please keep Lieutenant Kiefer of our Police Department in your thoughts and prayers. Has some medical issues going on, and we want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers as well as we move forward. So please keep these and all the others that we are thinking about now during this tough time that we're going through in your thoughts and prayers. Please join us now for a moment of silence and our pledge. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We will start with our roll call that we do for the meetings since a great deal of our council. Thank goodness to hear and many of our department heads also here, but we do have some that are on Zoom with us tonight. So I will go ahead and call the roll if you will, please. Chrissy Thomas is here, our Mayor Pro Tem. Jonathan Beal is here. Todd Perdue, Councilmember Perdue. Councilmember Ike Perkins. Councilmember David Stevens. Councilmember Ben Willis. City Attorney TJ Rohr is with us. Councilmember Ralph Presswood, I think, is on Zoom with us tonight.
I'm here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And our staff here tonight, Scott Hildebrand, our City Manager, Joshua Harris, our Communications Director, Ken Hare, Fire Chief, Police Chief Brent Phelps, Parks and Recreation Kenny Story, Radford Thomas, our Public Utilities Director, Jenny Wheelock, our Planning Director, Jared Wright, our Public Works Director. I'll go back now and pick up a few. Let's see, Shirley Cannon, our City Clerk, I know is on Zoom tonight. Donna Bean, our Finance Director. Kaylin Horn, Economic Development Director. And I think that covers everybody on that. So we appreciate that as we get started this evening. Our first order of business tonight is a special recognition. Tonight, we will have Irv Erto, the American Legion Post 29. I believe, Irv, are you the commander now? Is that?
I am this year.
Yes, sir. Well, good. Congratulations for that.
No, maybe not.
Or condolences, whichever one you like. But thank you. I know you do a lot with it, and we appreciate all you're doing. But tonight, Irv is here on behalf of the American Legion Post to present special honors, recognizing our Firefighter of the Year and our Police Officer of the Year. Also, we'll be joined by our Fire Chief Ken Hare and Police Chief Brent Phelps will be with them. But Irv, I'm going to let you introduce these fine people that will be recognized tonight, and thank you for what you guys do.
Okay. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. For the past few years, the American Legion Post 29 in Lenore has undertaken a sponsorship of awards for the Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year of City of Lenore, and we also do the County Sheriff's Deputy and EMT. So we did those last night. And it's the recognition, we are just sponsors who pay for the awards, and usually department heads will, I think they send a committee down so they can keep their hands clean. And it's to recognize excellence and so people who have maybe risen a little higher than others, and also to encourage people to reach higher. The fact that two people are being recognized doesn't diminish the fine works of the rest of our first responders, police and firefighters, and they do the things that we can't do or don't want to do, and they do them whenever it happens. So it's a privilege for us to be able to do this. So I guess maybe we'll start, you put Fire Chief there, so if Chief Hare, if he would bring up Captain Jonathan Wright, who's being recognized as Firefighter of the Year. And I'm going to give that to you, and you can present that to Jonathan. Okay? So I'm going to go take pictures.
First off, City Council Mayor, Mr. Hildebrand. I want to thank the American Legion for sponsoring this award again. This has become very special, I know to the individuals, but it really is to our department. We thank you. It's my honor that we selected this year Captain Jonathan Wright, and that there's not one achievement that Captain Wright has done for our department. He is truly a jack of all trades, and the good thing is he can do them all proficiently and efficiently for us. Some of the things, he is so skilled in many vocational trades that he utilizes willingly to our department. He's skilled in construction, carpentry, and the major thing that really enlightened us this year, as we've had many HVAC units going out. He had, I can't tell you the thousands of dollars his work willingly does, and he doesn't do it just when he's on duty. He'll come back in because he's all around town, because also, he's so well-rounded, he also works for the Housing Authority on his days off. Also, he works for the Community College and comes back and trains our firefighters on our training days. So he's super well-rounded in a lot of things, and we are very proud of everything he does. Like Mr. Erto said, this doesn't diminish anything anybody else has done at our department, but it's good that we can recognize all that he has done for us. He also helps out with his community in Collinsville, as he is a coach to mentor and teach other young kids as he's growing up. So he pretty much really does do it all. But our department couldn't really get his utilization if it wasn't for the love his wife Sherry of 21 years has that lets him be with us so much. She knows how much she spends time with us. And of course, we have to thank his three children, Kimberly, who's 11, Jackson, who is nine, and daughter Braylon, who's age seven. Without their sacrifice, our city wouldn't benefit from everything he does. And what he does for us frees up other departments to meet other departments' needs. And so that means so much to us, what all he does do for us. And it is an honor for our department to select an American Legion to award Captain Jonathan Wright, the Firefighter of the Year for Lenore Fire Department.
Yeah, we do. We could do and have, we went to the police and then do them together. Could we do? Yeah, that'd be good.
Chief Brent Phelps is going to present the Police Officer of the Year to Officer Jesse Massey.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to hand you this. So I don't knock it off. Council Manager, I just want to say thank you for having us here. Thank you, the American Legion, as always, for thinking and taking the effort to acknowledge firefighters and police officers for the job that they do. We truly are blessed with the staff that we have, and these are hard. It's hard when you have to select, you know, one person out of the 55 police officers. And, you know, you feel like, okay, how are we picking and choosing? So we do have a committee or a group, and I would never want to take that on myself. As we looked this year, sometimes it has been supervisors and people. This year, the name that came back to me from supervisors was Officer Jesse Massey. And let me tell you a little bit about her, and then I will recognize her. She proudly served our country with the United States Coast Guard from 2005 through 2009. She then went to work in the private sector for a little while, and then realized she wanted to be a police officer. And we hired her in July of 2019 as a police trainee and sent her to BLET because we saw some of the potential in her before she went to BLET. She graduated in December of 2019, started, was sworn in in January of 2020. And in her short year and a half, to me, that feels short. When I had a year and a half, it felt like I'd been here a long time. But now, 25 years, a year and a half feels like a short time period. But in that short time period, she's risen to the rank of Patrolman II. She is one of our field training officers, has completed the field training program. She is helping train new officers that we hire currently. There was a young lady that we've just hired, and I saw them going up and down the hall today, and her sharing some of that knowledge. She's completed the Police Law Institute that we send officers to, and she's also gained her intoxicator certificate. And when I asked her lieutenant and her captain, you know, tell me one thing off the cuff about Officer Massey, both of them talked about her work ethic. Both of them talked about, if I call, she says, what time do I need to be there? And that dedication for both police and fire is hard to find nowadays. It is hard to find people that are willing to serve others before they serve themselves. And so that dedication level that we see in her, we're proud of. Her lieutenant told me he wished he had 10 more just like her, and I would agree with that. It's not exactly how he said it, but I told him that's how I was going to say it. But the last thing that I know she's the proudest of is she's a mother. She has a daughter and a son, and with all the things she's already accomplished in her life, she's the most proud of that role. And those are the people that we want, working at the Police Department, interacting with the community, and doing the job that we do. And so we are very proud to recognize her tonight as the 2021 Officer of the Year.
We're a little back there. You know that Coast Guard is on our.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Too deep, too deep, knee-deep, knee-deep. We have let coasties in the Marine League. Congratulations.
Well, shoot, if we could stay here, we'll take our masks off back here, if that's okay. And if you guys would come up right here.
I don't know. I'm right here with the mic.
Well, I can't discuss that. That's up to you.
Right up here. Right up here. Right here.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Now, step up off of there.
Come on, guys.
And y'all, everybody take, just the front row, take a step to the right. All right, good. All right. Awesome. Like a name, one, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. I'm good.
Got it? Irv, you got everything?
I'm not getting right out of the line.
You get what you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you for what you do for our city. Very proud of you, and we appreciate all that. I know you guys do so much, so thank you very much. Bottom of my heart. All right, we'll continue with our agenda. Thank you for that. Very nice, always. First thing I want to do quickly before we go to the next item, right before our council meeting tonight, we had a walking park ribbon cutting, which was held at 5:00. Several council members and staff were there. Thank you all for being there. As we dedicated the new facilities that have been upgraded there, Parks and Recreation, Kenny, thank you for all the work that you've done there and your staff and everyone. Jared and all your people, everybody that has been a part of this. We improved the, with the help, of course, of the Brawhill Family Foundation's $100,000 donation, we made improvements to the bathrooms and facilities down there. We now have three bathrooms there, which is great and very, very nice inside, and fixed up the enclosures where the storage facilities and all that were done, painting. And then we fixed the decking at the other end of the Brawhill Walking Park. You know, this was a partnership with the Brawhill Family. TH, Tom Brawhill, was one of the co-founders of Brawhill Industries. He donated the land where this sits back in 1938 to the city, and a pool was built there in 1947, our city pool, which operated until 1975. When we go swimming over there, the first time I ever went off a high dive was there. Sure, a lot of you guys did as well, and a lot of fun. It was dedicated, completed in 1992 as the TH Brawhill Walking Park, and a major gift was made under the leadership of Mr. Paul Brawhill from the Brawhill Family Foundation. And it was patterned after the Butch Art Gardens of Vancouver Island in Canada that Mr. Brawhill has a wonderful love for. And Bill Early was a landscape architect. Harry Yates was the landscape architect, excuse me, and Furniture designer, Bill Early, were also a part of putting this all together, and it's one of those places that people in this city love to go and be a part of. So very proud of that, very proud of the partnership we have. So we dedicated that today. If you have a chance, please go down and take a look at the facilities at your convenience, and you might even want to walk a little bit. I rode over there, but anyway. But we're very proud of, very proud of that. So thank you all for the partnership there. Okay, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items, which consist of the minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. And Item B is a maintenance and service agreement. This is with the Joyston Water Works Incorporated and the City of Lenore. Recommendation of proposed maintenance and service agreement, including Attachment A with Joyston Water Works Incorporated and the City of Lenore as submitted. Those are the two items, and I'll open it up for any discussion, question, or in our motion for our consent agenda items. Does Hildebrand anymore need to talk anything about the Joyston Park or Bradford either one?
Just unless there's questions.
Okay, unless you have a question. We have discussed it before, so hopefully everyone is very familiar with what we're doing there.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to approve the consent agenda items A and B. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously tonight here. And Mr. Presswood? Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on then on our agenda to request and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council tonight, this is the time to do so. And if you will, please come to the podium and state your name and address. And Mr. Eller, we do know you, but we'd like for you to tell us again anyway. Welcome.
I'm Kevin Eller. I'm the owner of the South Street Pool House. I'd like to thank council and Mayor Gibbons, Mr. Hildebrand, for your time. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to share some information and seeking help with a problem that I have seen developing over several years downtown. This is, this condition is specific to the historic downtown business district. When we first bought this building up here, spent six months working on that building before we ever opened. We, I reached out to numerous people that in place at the time in the city, trying to figure out what we were going to do logistically with our waste. Our prior location, I had room for dumpsters and the proper logistic space to do what we need to do. Never really got a good answer out of anybody in the six months that I inquired, and when it come time to open the doors, I just put the stuff on Mulberry Street behind the building. That would seem to be the cleanest, safest place to put it. The prior occupants of that building had put it up on the square at the back door, we call our patio door. Not a good place to keep trash in the volumes that we produce in hot weather, for sure. I put my cardboard in my trash containers. At that point, I had to buy a couple of containers. I had four of the old green rollouts, which with the volume of trash pickup that we have downtown worked great. I put my cardboard in my trash cans, and automatically it got kicked back, and I was told I had to do something else different with it. At the old location, I had a dumpster from Republic Services. We put the cardboard in with the trash. Nobody had ever said anything about it. Don't know that there's a law against it, but that's what we did. No problems. Here, I have nowhere to put a dumpster at all. So I went to inquire with people like Vicki at 1841, what's happening to your cardboard? And she said, just put it out there, it'll disappear. So I did. I went and got a metal rack that's still sitting back on Mulberry Street, and we just started putting cardboard in it. Now, it got a couple of times where I thought, I might have to go get the pickup and come up here and haul this off Saturday. But it would disappear before Saturday came. I went for a long time and never touched any cardboard at all. And then COVID came, and of course, things changed. When the people, a little bit before COVID, six months maybe, somewhere along there, card, the price of recycled cardboard to market must have dropped out because my cardboard quit disappearing. Then I had to start hauling it off. But I could manage every couple of weeks, find a day when the recycling center's open where I could get it and get it down there. Then COVID came. Things changed, but we struggled through that. Since I reopened, you know, during COVID, we closed for 90 days and just kind of reinvented the whole place. And when we reopened last October, I had a guy on staff at a pickup truck, and he was eager at the time, and he just volunteered to haul the cardboard off every week. So I went for a long time and never touched it, didn't really realize. But since October, our sales prior to COVID were like 40% food and 60% alcohol. Today, our food sales is more like 70, 75% of our sales, and our alcohol's down like 25 or 30% of our sales. But what that says is we're producing a lot more trash, and my cardboard problem is about double what it was before. With the help situation, my workload trying to run a business, I try to do what I can. I'm pro downtown Lenore. I want to see downtown Lenore boom. I do everything I can to make my place, and constantly working on stuff as money and time is available to improve. I want my corner of the square to be the nicest corner on the square, and I do everything I can to do that. I'm concerned about all the trash and the cardboard. I never have liked it being on Mulberry Street. It's an eyesore. And we see the same problem that I've got when you ride through Hogwaller most of the time. Vicki tries to keep it up, but there again, we got a lot of stuff to do. We're shorthanded and overworked. We need some relief of a way to handle our recycling, mainly the cardboard. When we went around and replaced the trash cans, I've wound up with two instead of four. And even though I get trash pickup three days a week, my lids are standing up with trash piled on top. And we all know when you get a lot of trash problems, what happens after that. And I've dealt with that, too, so it's a lot better than it used to be, but we don't want to get back to where it used to be. I'm just, I'm at wits end of what to do. I'm overworked. It looks bad. We need to find a solution, and I'm just asking for help. I'm willing to brainstorm. I got a lot of years in logistics and problem solving. We got a problem, and if any more restaurants come to town, this problem's going to get worse. This is something we should have addressed four and a half, five years ago. That's really all I have to say about it. I'm available. Anybody wants to talk about it any further. I've got several other things about the immediate downtown area that, you know, need to be discussed, need to be thought about, but right now, this is the most important pending thing.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll look into that. Mr. Hildebrand, of course, is taking note, and Mr. Wright is here also, so we'll have some discussions about that. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, we'll move on then to, we do not have any reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of our City Manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, Council, a couple items for your information this evening. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, August 19th, 2:00 in a Zoom meeting. The Southern Sundown Four-Miler Race will be held on Saturday, August 21st, beginning at 7:00 PM in downtown Lenore. The Planning Board meeting for this month, August 23rd, has been canceled. The next meeting will be Monday, September 27th, at 5:30 PM in these chambers. The Committee at the Hall will meet on Tuesday, August 24th, 8:30 AM, Third Floor City Hall. That meeting will also entail a trip to the water plant and also to the wastewater plant to observe some of the construction that's taken place in the last, I guess, year and a half up to present time with the bio solids project. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, August 25th, at noon at the airport. City offices will be closed on Monday, September 6th, in observance of Labor Day. And that's all the information I have regarding that. Tonight, we have one item for council action. That's a bid award for roof replacements at both MLK Center and also at the Aquatic Center. The city solicited bids back on August 3rd. With that, four bids were distributed. Two folks responded to no bid. The low bid was Barger Ash at $142,950 for both facilities. That did exceed our project budget, but due to the nature of the environment we're in right now, we anticipated that somewhat, but also, we looked at trying to value-engineer that project to lower that bid, but based on discussions Mr. Wright had with the lowest bidder, we felt that what we proposed to begin with is the best option to go, and the fact that the costs are higher. If we don't fix these problems, we're going to have greater problems with these facilities. So I think the recommendation of staff is to go back and award that bid to Barger Ash for $142,950. If you have questions, I know Mr. Wright's here, and also Mr. Story with Parks and Rec can go back and answer those.
Heard the recommendation from the City Manager and staff of roof replacements and repairs for, this is a contract with Barger Ash Roofing Company. Total contract value is $442,950. This includes roof replacements and repairs at the Lenore Aquatic and Fitness Center and the Mark Luther King Jr. Center, or please refer to the MLK.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that we have found additional funds to cover that. And Mr. Mayor, I would note that we have found additional funds to cover that difference as well.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Jared or Kenny, and I don't mean for you to get up, but the, at the MLK, will this take care of that issue where that water was coming in that side back where the floor?
Take care of the issues at MLK along with the aquatics.
I didn't know if that was a, I can't remember if.
Specifically at MLK, and if you'll look at the bid tab and the breakdown of costs, it's substantially cheaper at MLK. Of course, we're replacing much less roof structure at MLK. And part of our value engineering process was trying to perform spot repairs at MLK to address these areas instead of just replacing the entire area that appears to be deficient. Through that conversation with contractor, spot repairs were not really an option. So, yes, to answer your question, I know that's a long answer, but this will take care of those issues along with address the larger issues at the Aquatic Center.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I had some concerns about the damage that may be done at both facilities. The Lenore Aquatic Fitness Center, I spoke with Kenny Story about the tongue and groove roofing we had inside. And I noticed that we're using more metal roofing on these two projects. I think that's great.
To that point, you know, currently we have asphalt shingles over the indoor pool with the tongue and groove roof. And our assumption is that the chlorinated humidity that, you know, makes its way to the shingles has prematurely deteriorated the fasteners to hold the shingles in place. So, we definitely want to do a vapor barrier and then a metal roof to prevent any of that chlorine humid air from reaching the metal. So, yeah, we're, we considered as part of the value engineering process to go back with shingles to hopefully lower that cost. Ultimately, that was not a wise decision because we'd be right back where we are now talking about fasteners being prematurely.
Good money after that.
Yeah. Good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid award as presented.
Okay. I have a motion, Councilmember Stevens, to accept the bid award as presented for the roof replacements and repairs for these two facilities. Is there any other questions, anybody? If not, I'll call for a question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And on Zoom?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And any opposed? Thank you. And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for your work on that and putting it together. We look forward to this being done and hopefully improving a whole lot of good things at both those facilities there. Anything else, Mr. Hillbrand?
All right.
Okay. Any report and recommendation from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. On the mayor's office, I do have a couple of appointments just to talk with you about tonight. These will be considered at our September 7 meeting. Our Lenore ABC Board, we are still working on that. We will have an open seat there in the future. Right now, that seat is not quite empty yet, but we will have one, so we're certainly taking application and discussing that with it. Would make a recommendation to you that our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Rick Pierce, who has been serving, has done a great job. We appreciate his work there. He will be considered again for a two-year term, if that's agreeable on that. He is currently very active with our Parks and Recreation in a lot of areas. And we have another recommendation. This will be for a new seat on our Tourism Development Authority, the LTDA. This will be for Mr. Jesse Plaster for a four-year term. As you know, the Tourism Authority has certain seats that have to be filled with certain things, and with Mr. Plaster's bed and breakfast.
Airbnb.
Airbnb, thank you. Airbnbs that are now done. That fits the role that would fit someone serving on this. And we do have a couple of empty seats on that board, so we're trying to fill that as we go. So, have discussed that with him, and so we would make that recommendation. But these would be considered at our September 7 meeting. So, I just want to make that recommendations to you at this time to be thinking about. Okay, and that's all. We had a great event Friday night, music downtown. It was great to be back in our downtown area with the music Fractured played on the square, very nice. The night was going great, and then the thunder and lightning kind of hit, but everyone stayed around, and it stopped, didn't really rain. The lightning moved on, so it, people did stay, and we went ahead and finished the evening, so it was a nice. It was great to be back together again and have a couple of events in our downtown and several other things. And I know, Mr. Story, I know you had a great event, I think, of the gospel scene at the MLK Center on Saturday.
Saturday night.
Yeah.
Really well.
Good, good. It's good to hear. I know that there was, of course, the weather probably affected that as well because it was raining pretty hard when all that was starting, but glad that those events are going on and other things that we're trying to do. So, anyway, are there any reports or recommendations from any of our council members tonight?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that there's going to be a bookbag giveaway at the MLK Center this Thursday. The Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance and other partners will be there. Bookbag giveaway will be for kindergarten all the way to 12 years old. He's still collecting bookbags. If anybody would like to drop bookbags and supplies off, and I think there's going to be a truck there for vaccinations. Is that correct?
Yes, Kama, Kama County Health Department will be there as well, along with JBS Food and Food.
Yes.
And they have free food and some donations for folks to win, well, not donations, let me back up, the chance to win some food from JBS for a whole year to feed the family, of course. A lot of good things going on on Thursday up at the Kinsley.
What time does that start again?
It starts at 3:00.
3:00. Thank you.
Three to five.
Three to five. He is still collecting bookbags.
Okay.
Right now, we've got probably close to 250 bookbags. Don't worry about, that's a first church.
First, yeah.
Doug Mayne, who used to work for me, they've had some left over, and they've partnered with us as well. It'll be a good event.
Good, great.
Now, anybody needs their children, needs bookbags, send them on up.
Appreciate that. Glad that's being done. Certainly, school was, well, what, right around the corner, isn't it, next Monday?
Monday.
Monday, we get started, so hope everything. We'll keep getting as good as it can get, get better, we hope, before that all starts. But I know it's a tough time. A lot of decisions being made right now on how to, how's the best way to do all those things. But helping with school supplies like that for the kids is a great thing. I know that the communities of schools and teacher treasures did their pack-a-bus deal a week or so ago, and that went very well. A lot of supplies were there. We dunked some people in a dunking boot, which was kind of fun to do, and anyway.
Got to show your skills off. That was pretty good.
Yep. Got to, I got Commissioner Potter and Mr.?
Longano.
Longano, thank you. Patrick, yeah. That was fun, yeah. And I appreciate everybody that sat in there and did that and helped bring the money and the supplies for our children as we get started. Is there anything else to come before us tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.